If you'll all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to your republic, our Christian nation, our God, and his love and liberty.
Thank you. All right, we'll get right down to it. Approve the minutes from our last meeting if anyone's had a chance to look it over. Any questions on the minutes? Okay. Second. Thank you. So, everybody okay with this? Adjustments to the agenda.
What we'd like to do under new business is just move up 10.3, which is an out-of-state field trip, just because Nate Priest is here to answer any questions that he might have. So make 10.3 the first thing under new business. And after that, I would recommend that we move up 10.5, the math middle school schedule change proposal as well.
Everyone okay with that? Yeah, okay. So, next is the public session. This public session is for anyone who wishes to speak to something on the agenda tonight. I will say that if you're here to speak to the middle school schedule change proposal, you can wait because after we hear from the administration, we will allow for public comment right after that, so it's all cohesive and together. But if there's any other public comment on anything else on the agenda, come on up. Committee reports. The Morris High Middle East Project.
Yeah, just a quick report or our targets for what we need to be doing at this point with the site for the new high school, as well as for the design. I've heard from several Morse teachers and vocational teachers that the recent meetings with Ron Lamar, our chief architect, have gone well. They feel listened to. He met with a group of students probably two weeks ago as well. I think it's becoming a reality for our students. Even students are asking the question, how can we bring some meaningful things from the old high school into the new high school? So again, everything's on target. We will go out to bid for the site work this spring. And when people drive by Anchor Road right after July 4th, you'll start to see and hear a lot of blasting of ledge. But as of right now, we are doing quite a bit of active fundraising, and our goal is to raise $700,000. And we believe we'll get between $700,000 and a billion dollars of fundraising for this new school.
Great, thank you. Next is curriculum assessment and instruction update.
Hello. A few quick things this evening. First, last board meeting, I reported that I was going to be speaking on a panel about homelessness. Just so everyone's aware, that happened the Wednesday night before vacation. And it was part of a series called Community Conversations in Bath. And it was myself, a gentleman from Purple Street who runs the homeless veterans part of their organization, and then a minister. And so the three of us each presented, answered questions, and it was actually very well-attended and a pretty interesting series. And I know that we'll continue to publicize their future events. But I think people were really interested in a lot of what I shared with you already about what procedures we go through with the students we have here, our numbers, what the current laws are. And so I'm really glad you participated in that. It was a great conversation. The next update is on our proficiency-based work. The last time I spoke about that, we, just to remind everyone, we talked about that the high school was pretty far along, the elementary school was pretty far along, and the middle school was the area where the most work had to happen. Just to update everyone, and that we wouldn't be using the consultant starting next year. So there would be savings there. Currently, our consultant is doing half-days with middle school area content teams, where they're all creating the different wording and background documentation. So the report cards will be ready and aligned for next year. So we'll be able to start the year off with everything set and ready to go with assessments pretty well finalized. And so I just wanted you to be aware that things are looking like they're right on schedule for us to be on target for what I had presented earlier, which is to start off next year with our system completely organized and be able to share that with parents at the end of this year, so they're prepared for next year and what that will look like, which is one of the requests of the board. Further update on assessments. I'm sure that students will start talking about these relatively soon, so I just wanted to mention this. Dean Emerson and myself went to the Empower test training that happened in Portland a couple of weeks ago. Amber McGowan and Eric Martin went to the SAT training, because all of those tests are upcoming for our students. So again, this year, we will have the Empower testing for grades three through eight, and that starts March 18th. And then April 10th is the SAT day for 11th graders, or students in their third year of high school. So just to be aware of that. Patrick has spoken in the past about the ASOP subcalling system that was new. And we've recently talked to principals, and they feel like that system is going pretty well. It's very efficient. Sub slots are getting filled, and there are very few times so far that anyone can report where we haven't had a body with our students, which is great, which I know is happening more often. And Rob Morris and I were talking today just about how many more subs seem to be applying this year, which I know has been a problem in the past. And he said that this is the most applications and interviews we've had in a very long time, which is great. We're both not sure why that's happening, but we'll take it. And then finally, my last update is on our gifted and talented program. I took the gifted and talented staff to Gartner, where I worked before, because they have a pretty well-renowned gifted and talented program, just to sort of look at a totally different way our program is run. And so we are kind of throwing around some ideas of how to add and change the gifted and talented program here. It's a very robust program already, but they were excited to try some new things. And so we are going to be thinking more about that in the next couple of months. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, because I'll probably have a more detailed report on that upcoming. And there'll also be parts of the budget conversations with the finance committee that are coming up that will be reflected in that as well. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? No, it's very clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Sarah, student board report for us.
So I just have a little short thing to say. S E L C, the week before break, organized this winter carnival for us during the last two periods of the Friday before we went on winter break. And it was really fun, and it was definitely a big hit. We haven't done anything like that in the past. But basically, there were a bunch of events that everybody could go to. And during the last period of the day, there was a So You Think You Know Morse kind of game show type thing. It was very fun. And I just, I wanted to say that that was something that I guess happened a long time ago with Morse students, and they kind of brought it out this year, and it was definitely a big hit.
Thanks for sharing. 8.0, superintendent's report.
Just wanted to let people know, maybe you've read in the paper, but our Ocean Bowl, which is an academic competition. We had two teams from Morse, and we had 17 schools total that went to the University of Maine at Orenno and competed. And Morse took first place and took second place. The first-place team gets to go to the University of Colorado coming up, which the board will hopefully approve tonight as an out-of-state field trip. But congrats to all the team members, a lot of time, a lot of effort, and also the chaperones that are teachers at Morse High Schools. Congratulations to them. Just a couple of highlights, and Mr. Priest is here, he can add some things if he'd like. But for the winter sports season, we had boys swim team was a KBAC champs. Girls were runners-up. Charing qualified for the states and finished seventh. Wrestling, we had seven athletes qualify for states. Indoor track, we had four. And girls basketball made the postseason and hosted a preliminary game the week before break. We also had an individual, Jenny Wilbraham, that competes as an individual from Morse, but trains in Nordic skiing with Mami Ararat. It's an agreement we had with them. And Jenny placed first overall in the Class A classical race, third overall in the freestyle, and was the overall individual combined champion for Class A. Student of the Semester Breakfast at BRCTC, February 9th, I believe. Very well-attended, well-done by Julie Kenny, who's here tonight. And just a great way for students and a lot of families to show up. I think we might have to find a different location, because the place is packed every time we do it. But well-deserved recognition for those students and their families. And just a reminder, it's a little ways off, but if anybody has an interest, the Battle of the Books, which is another academic competition, will be coming up on April 5th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Financial report, Deb.
Good evening. Tonight, we're looking at the month of January, and we have spent 14.5 million of our $28 million budget, which is 50% compared to 49% last year. So we are spending in line with pretty much what we did last year. 16 million we've brought in of our revenue, and compared, that's 57% compared to 55% last year. We're bringing in a little bit more in gate receipts this year. Actually, we're up about $7,000 so far, which is a good thing. A little bit more in interest on investments. Our encumbered amount that you see on the financial report, once again, the majority of it is salary and benefits, but it doesn't reflect any substitute costs which continue throughout the year. One area we need to keep an eye on, once again, is special education between the instruction and tuition. So Justin and I are watching those two lines. We've spent $1,039,000 on the Morse High School project so far. And we've received a vocational mini-grant of $29,000 this year. That was just recent. And Dyke Knoll received a $5,000 Davenport grant that Kathy Hendrickson applied for for a book deposit. So those are new revenues there. Questions?
What was the $29,000 for?
Vocational mini-grant. Majority of that's for equipment.
For equipment?
Yes.
Great. Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you, Deb. Old business review of the board goals, which actually is usually Jennifer does when she's not here. And I'll know others. I'll just review what, I'll just go over what they are. Every year, we come up with what the goals, major goals are for the year. Did you have anything specific that you wanted to? Goal one is monitoring actively participating in Morse, the RCTC construction project action steps, which follow, which had to do with advocacy, review of the design, approving the site project funding agreement, exercising oversight of the selection of the project manager, which is all ongoing. Goal two, develop and implement a district-wide communications plan that maximizes the use of technology or experience in the community, which we actually started last year. Communication numbers are on this day. And they have been, and they have been working on that, taking those comments, and Dean Emerson and staff have been looking on that. Goal three, increase the board's understanding of response to intervention, RTIs as a district strategy to improve education outcomes. And there's been a lot of work done on that as well. And goal four, develop an understanding of the teacher evaluation system, its purposes and how it is used to enhance the quality of education in the district. And just a couple of months ago, we got an update on where that is, and it's going quite well. So we are on top of all four of these and continue to work on them, and we'll keep everyone New business, 10.0. Let's go with, this is the out-of-state overnight trip from our site school baseball team. And that's an action item. Do you want me to take it?
Yeah, it's a little unique, but that's why I asked Nate Priest to be here, in case she had questions. But this is an out-of-state trip to Florida. It's not just the University of Maine or UNH. But it is done during the April break. It is no cost to the district. You know, parents and the team of fundraising, Garrett Olson has provided you with some backup, the coach, sufficient adult supervision, and really, they're going down there to play, get a head start on the baseball season. Other schools in Maine do this. We haven't done it in my time here. So I just wanted to see if you had any questions regarding this trip.
Do you want to go? Yeah, how many more chaperones do you have? Sure. So chaperone, chaperones is what you want to know about. Bill's ready to sign on.
Now, just what questions do you have for Mr. Priest, though? I mean, we have done this, you know, prior. Sometimes we do have students that go to a different country, but it's not affiliated with the school during, say, the February and the April break. And, you know, these student athletes aren't going to be representing Morse High School. They will be wearing Morse uniforms, correct? Maybe. Correct. So that's why we're bringing to you for your approval, hopefully.
Yeah, how is the, I'm just curious, is that, so is this something, obviously, lots of teams going down for this week?
Yep, we're chartering, flying with Chafres, so we'll actually be on plane with Chafres. A lot of teams from Maine do this.
That's great.
As far as chaperones go, just to answer your question, so 12 players and three coaches will fly down on the charter flight. And down there, there's going to be five families already down there. Six families already down there, too. So there's going to be a lot of chaperones, a lot of adult supervision. Garrett Olson is a Bath East Department, is an officer. One of the assistant coaches going down is also an officer, so it should be a pretty good place.
That's great. How many games do they get to play?
They have three scheduled right now. They made sure to move that. They made a couple of double headers. So this isn't a set, it's no itinerary, but as of right now, they have three scheduled.
Great, looks great. Does anyone have any questions for day?
I guess the old athletics director, because you used to deal with all kinds of bureaucracy within athletics. The state association's okay with this, and Massachusetts, the world would have to vote on it.
Yep.
It's legal.
Yeah, it is legal.
Good luck.
Can I get a motion? Okay, take it. And get a second. Bill's second, and all in favor. Great, you're approved. Thank you so much. Great ideas. So now, 10.2, math middle school schedule change proposal. Ready, Katie?
Sure.
All right. So at the, so kind of a background on how we got to this proposal. Years ago, Bath Middle School didn't have a humanities model. And if you're not familiar, the humanities model is where you have social studies and reading taught together. But during a tough budget season, and I'm thinking this is over 10 years ago, there was a reduction in staff at Bath Middle School, and we had to go to the humanities model. And the reason I point that out is that at no point was that decision made thinking that it was in the best interest of students to combine reading and social studies together, but it was done out of necessity. And so this fall, when Katie came on, we met to discuss, you know, what are some of the strengths of Bath Middle School, where are some areas that we could use some improvement. And one thing that came up are some of the concerns that you see here. And as she and I started discussing this and talking about how we could address these needs in a budget-neutral way, you know, we started looking at the schedule, and we were unable to find a way to do this in which there wouldn't require some change in the staffing at Bath Middle. And then once we came to that realization, at no point did I feel like it would have been a good idea to go to the staff with, like, hey, here are some changes that we're considering. Just for, you know, once you put that out there, you start having people talking about what they think the priorities are, and if there is going to be a change in staff, what are the areas that should be changed? And you end up getting teachers against teachers. You have different groups. What one teacher kind of described, almost like a survivor situation, where you have different cliques that have different feelings in those areas. And so we didn't bring it to the teachers until we had something put together, and we did this in January. But the concerns that we're trying to address with this proposal is that, you know, we have a lack of explicit teaching of reading in grades six through eight, because it's done through the humanities model. And it's not very consistent, depending on the teacher. You have some who focus a little bit more on reading, some who focus a little bit more on social studies. But with the limited amount of class time that our teachers have, which is about 45 minutes per class, we're not adequately teaching either reading or social studies. In our seventh and eighth grades, we also have non-ELA teachers that are teaching writing. We do have humanities teachers made who have ELA backgrounds that teach writing, but we also have our math and science teachers that need to teach writing for seventh and eighth grade. As I mentioned, humanities is unable to cover sufficient reading and social studies content or standards. There isn't enough time in their classes to do that. And that's also true about what we're seeing in math and science. The amount of standards that we have as we're trying to move towards a proficiency-based system, it's just not sufficient to cover all the material that we have. So some of the alternatives that were considered, one house for grade-level model, this is something that I think existed at the middle school a while ago. It's a pretty big move away from middle school philosophy. It's more of a junior high model. You don't have smaller teams. No matter what iteration Katie and I looked at with this, we were always left reducing staff from one to three positions, depending on which format we were looking at. And the other thing that really made it untenable was that they doubled teacher caseloads. We went from 60 students per teacher caseload to 120. So we were doubling teacher caseloads. And I think all the teachers would tell you that there isn't enough time now to do all the work that needs to be done. If you doubled the number of students they're responsible for, it just wasn't going to be workable. Then another model that we considered, and this was considered the last week right before the break, had become a hybrid, routine model, where you had one seventh-grade house, one eighth-grade house, and then one that's a combination of seventh and eighth grade. The benefit to this was that it would have allowed us to keep all staff. And this is a model that we discussed at our team leader meeting on February 14th. And then I met with all of these, the six houses here at Bath Middle School to go over with them. They had the time to talk on their own, and I met with them to kind of talk about what worked, what didn't work. And the big takeaway from that was none of the six houses wanted to move forward with considering it. And the reasons, some of the reasons for that, it didn't provide any of that extra core content, class time. It increased about five minutes for sixth grade. There was no extra time. Four were split of humanities for sixth grade. Sixth grade had to keep the humanities model. They turned it to a pretty inequitable workload for whoever had the seventh and eighth-grade house. And it still increased the teacher caseloads and number of students by 33%. So we would have gone from 60 students in a house to 80. Another level of concern for special education, how to make that work, is that in foreign language, in terms of the numbers of kids that they would have to have in the class, you know, we have one foreign language teacher, and with this model, we would have been looking at about 40 kids in foreign language in each class before we started pulling students out. And then just trying to make all of our outdoor learning opportunities and other field trips work, since we have so many over seventh and eighth grade, that seventh and eighth-grade house would go, in some instances, especially in the fall, where we have a lot of this work happening. You have a couple of weeks without being able to have any actual class time, because seventh grade would be done on an outdoor learning trip, and then the eighth grade would be done. So all of these concerns that I kind of outlined, they've all contributed to a difficulty to implement this proficiency-based system with our current model. And so in an effort to improve the student experience and ensure that we can provide every student with sufficient time, with this core content and skills to be addressed in the classroom, the proposal that Katie and I came up with would be, and I'll leave this out there for a little bit, so it'll be time to look at it, we would be reducing the exploratory programs at BMS. And those two would be tech ed and computer. And I'll get to the rationale for why those two, just a couple of minutes. So right now, computer currently gets about 85 classes that are 45 minutes in length, which happens in seventh grade only. And tech ed has about 22 classes, could be 23, depending on the rotation. 22 classes in 45 minutes in sixth grade, and then also the 85 classes that are 45 minutes in length in eighth grade. And so while we would reduce those two exploratory programs, we would then add two social studies positions and connect them to the seventh and eighth-grade houses. And then they would also join the exploratory rotation, so that sixth grade would have exposure to social studies as well. And the proposal would be that we do this over two years. So for the upcoming 2018, 2019 year, we replace computer program, the seventh and eighth-grade, seventh-grade social studies position. And then the 2019, 2020 year, we replace tech ed in eighth-grade social studies position. So the rationale behind this phase, and our current seventh-grade students will have completed the computer program, and they would also be to complete the current eighth-grade program, which does include tech ed. And then our current sixth-grade students wouldn't experience either of those programs. Instead, they would begin with social studies in seventh grade next year, and then the second year that phase in, they would get the second year of social studies as eighth grade. And then the third reason for it is retirement of Steve Richard. When Dave Cowie and I first met with Steve to let him know of the proposed changes, he did share with us that he was one year from retirement. And he had shared that with us, and then he also shared it with a few other staff as well. And so that was something that, you know, once that became known to us, that we can take that into consideration, it fits into the phase in. So that's the reason that we decided this two-year plan, rather than just making both changes for next year. So the rationale behind why choosing tech ed and computer as the two explorators to produce, we looked at similar middle schools around the state. we looked at similar middle schools around the state in terms of what they offer their students. Now that we are one-to-one with Chromebooks, grades three through twelve, the way technology is used tends to be done more organically in the classroom. The programs that we did not touch are the ones that will continue to grow into the high school. And so those that we made at Bath Middle are art and foreign language, health, PE, advanced course. Industrial arts was cut from the high school a number of years ago. And there really isn't a computer program at the high school. The Volk Center does offer things similar to industrial arts, the demographic design program. In terms of the high school experience, all students have that option for it, they don't exist. It does align with offerings from Woolwiches. They don't have computer or tech ed. That's not the reason behind it, but it does come to work out that it does align with what Woolwich offers. The BMS can evolve the EL education model. And this provides a lot of opportunities for hands-on learning to our students. And the hands-on piece is one thing that tech ed, computer in particular, offer a lot. And then the last one is that the content standards, that students are responsible for learning the graduation standards. In art, foreign language, health, PE can't be met recovered in any other class. Engineering standards that are required are covered in sixth to eighth grade science classes. I think we found that there was any one standard that wasn't being touched upon in those classes. And that's something that we can make a change to what's happening in the science classroom to make sure that those standards are being met. So some of the challenges to the proposal. The largest one is that we are talking about a loss of two good people. Both Steve and Don have been here for over a decade each. And there is no question that they are upstanding with students and their programs. And more so than the programs, I think, is people offer a lot to our kids. So that is a big challenge. Potential impact on expeditions at BMS. As an EL education school, we try to have this large interdisciplinarity. Things that we call expeditions that happen a couple of times a year. And both tech ed and computer have played a role particularly in the last two years. Potential impact on STEAM education. If you're not familiar with the acronym, it's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And then the impact on students in need of those hands-on learning experiences. So I've met with all of the teachers in the building, probably more than once, to kind of discuss what they see as challenges and benefits. And these are kind of the big challenges that have kept coming up. And so we do feel that we can address some of these challenges. So for the expeditions, they've been running for years without having computer or tech ed aligned with the teams or houses. That was a change that I made last year. It was the first year that we'd gone back to that. And so the teams, the houses are used to running expeditions without having tech ed or computer tied directly to them. We could better utilize our existing tech integrator. Bob Jordan does work between both middle schools and the high school. But I think we're really underutilizing what he can offer our students in terms of support throughout technology with our expeditions. STEAM, well, science, arts, and math are all being increased significantly in this proposal. It's just the technology and engineering base that of course are being impacted. Increase of the student experience with one-to-one technologies, as I said, and the way that's used in the classroom. And then the engineering standards being taught by science teachers. It's also important to note that that space, I know that there was some concern around that tech ed lab and the tools and materials. They're still available for you, so the lab's not going away. In terms of what we can use it for, you know, science is going to increase any of their engineering work at all. They have that as a engineering lab. It really could be used by anyone with the additional time added to all of the classes. And we'll look at that a little bit. Building construction can take part in some of the regular classroom projects. And then the last bullet there and then the next piece. You know, we've already reached out to Julie and Katie at the tech center to talk about how we can make some changes with our relationship there. And there are some vocational teachers who would be willing to provide safety training to BMS staff so that they could use the tools and materials with students or teachers that were interested if it would be required. And then we increase the experiences that we have at the RCTC. Again, after we checked with Julie, there was some excitement about the possibility of some after-school clubs that could be led by the Volk teachers. We can look at increasing the number of days that BMS students can attend different experiences at the RCTC. Right now, we have one full day. There are other opportunities during the school year where we could increase that. And then the possibility exists with some summer school options with vocational programs. That is, the changes happen at the RCTC the next couple of years. We'll go to the high school and the funding for the state, you know, that exists, the possibility that we haven't had. So the benefits of the proposal. So writing being taught by ELA teachers in grades seven, eight. As I said, right now, we do have math and science teachers trying to teach writing. With the separate social studies from ELA. And then social studies would be taught by social studies teachers. We're doing it right now. In our humanities model, we have some ELA teachers trying to teach social studies. We have separate explicitly taught writing and reading blocks for sixth grade. And it doesn't force teachers into content areas that are not their expertise. And then really the biggest one is they extend more content class time. We can be able to increase our core classes to forty-five to sixty minutes each day. So it's an extra hour of more content instruction each week, which is about thirty-six hours for the year. So you're effectively adding a fifth quarter to the school year for those four core classes. And this does allow for more depth and less breadth in addressing the content and skills for those core content areas. So to wrap up in summary, so Katie and I gave a lot of thought to this and the impact that it will have on staff and students at Bath Middle School. It was certainly not an easy decision. This is something that we've struggled for, struggled with for the last couple of months. Understanding the emotional piece, anytime you have long-term teachers and long-term programs that are being looked at, the response, the first responses that you feel, you feel bad. And I know that Katie and I have felt pretty terribly about this. And it does, frankly, it does suck. When it comes to weigh the needs, challenge the benefits to all the students at Bath Middle School, it was something that we really couldn't move away from. And as hard as it was, we feel like the benefits aren't really there. So we acknowledge that there is going to be a loss. We cannot replace those two people. Technically, we feel like two spots for the two social studies teachers. But they're two people who have been very important to this building for a long time. So you have to acknowledge that that is a loss. You know, the potential impact in the areas that we mentioned. We don't know exactly what that will look like, what we can believe and we can mitigate those as we tried to highlight in the presentation. And really what it came down to is, you know, we have some big needs. And when a solution exists to fix that and keep everything without adding an hour to the school day, the financial impact of that, you know, is possible. But after considering what the challenges are, the needs, the benefits to all of the students, I strongly believe this is in the best interest of all of our students. So that's why I made this proposal to the board with these changes. I'm happy to answer any questions at the board again.
Great, thank you, Brandon. Does anyone have any questions out there?
I guess my biggest concern is what's going to happen with the tech park. How is that being integrated in the classes? I know kids can text and they can play games and things, but is more down the road for them in technology and science than this? And where do they get it? At what age and where?
So now that the district is one-to-one with Chromebooks starting in third grade, a lot of that technology piece is going to be starting younger. And the programs that they're going to use will start right there in third grade. And each year, each teacher is going to have different programs. So you might not have kind of a comprehensive, here's a curriculum for how some of that technology is going to be met. But in this kind of digital age, what we're seeing is that the more exposure kids have with these devices and that initial kind of I can play games and text thing, as I mentioned, it does have to go away. They start using it for all the really cool things that they can do that have educational type as well. So, you know, we don't have, we won't have any other kind of explicit teaching of some of those computer pieces. Now, I've met with Don Siwan, a computer science teacher, looked at his curriculum and tried to highlight kind of, you know, what he feels are the skills that he really wants to see our middle school students have. I think we can do a lot of that in the classroom. I think that, you know, we will also have to look at how we can expand those opportunities for students after school. Much like we have our middle robotics where kids learn some programming. I think we can continue to look at how we can expand that for coding opportunities for different software applications, you know, by where kids' interests lie.
So you're saying it would start in third? What exactly are you giving the teachers in order? It's like, I mean, obviously they're using computers, but it's not a formal curriculum?
No, it wouldn't be a formal curriculum. It's, you know, what we're seeing now is kids tend to learn how to use the devices and the different programs organically in the classroom. So, you know, teachers find something that they want to work on and they introduce it to students. So it wouldn't be a formal curriculum that starts in third grade. But just as kids have the devices and teachers discover the new ways they want to use them with the kids' education, the kids will get the exposure to that.
So this might actually branch off into another topic, but just so I'm clear. So right now, as we have the computer classes in middle school, there's nothing in the high school or that type of thing. There's really nothing formal in the elementary school, right?
Yeah, there's no set curriculum at the elementary level. At the high school, there is some computer programming. I don't like those, that's what it's going to take.
Is that just, I'm just trying to understand, is that, do other schools have other systems? How, is it pretty much the same or is it, that you know, I'm just...
I can speak for Gardner where I was in Boston and there was no computer class. I think a lot of what Maine was trying to do, it seems like with the one-to-one models, what Brandon was talking about, is exposure for daily use of things like the Google Suite, Google Classroom, and all the other really neat programs that the technology committee is sort of working to collect and promote across the district to teach our teachers. We're spending a lot of time on late start Wednesdays in different areas, you know, working on learning new things that, you know, our own Chromebooks can do as adults that we can share with our students and that's been going well. So it's the idea that those opportunities would kind of lead down to the students rather than having a formal curriculum. Because there aren't, per se, computer standards that the state currently has districts addressing.
And then?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then as far as use of the shop class, that whole, you're saying we get that through, you said in science is what you have in there. Can you just be a little more like, that room would not go away, is what you're saying?
No, the room doesn't go away. In terms of what you're talking about being in the science classes are the engineering standards. So as part of the next-gen science standards, they have a outlined number of engineering standards that are also being hit in the science classrooms as well as what happens in tech ed.
Those are actually science standards that are taught by the science teachers. Right now, we're able to have some of them taught in tech ed. But in case of errors, it's just there to be the responsibility of the teachers. That's the problem.
Any other questions?
Just to include one, I want to open up a whole can to our spots. But we run two middle schools in this district. What is the status of the Woolwich Central School as it relates to the changes that you're advocating?
So this would actually align us with what is going on at Woolwich Central School because they have those four content areas separate. They have math, science, social studies, and ELA. They don't have a humanities model like we've had. And in terms of the offerings that you would have under this proposal, they'd be the same as what is offered at Woolwich. Woolwich does not have a tech ed or computer program.
So basically what you're saying is it will not have an effect on Tracy's school?
Right, there would be no impact.
They're already aligned pretty much with what you're recommending?
Yeah, so in terms of the core content classes, they would be aligned with what we're recommending. And, you know, we have to believe there's probably a benefit to the ELA and social studies teachers at Woolwich because they would then have people here to work within those content areas. Whereas right now, if we have any curriculum work that happens, we have our six humanities teachers who are covering reading and social studies trying to work with their separate social studies and ELA teachers. But really, there would be no impact on Woolwich.
The increase, presumably it's an increased association with the RCTC that's mentioned within the context of this program. Are you comfortable with that? I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be. That's not a consultation with you and the tech school is in...
We have actually had discussions about it. There's a bill right now going to legislature about increasing middle school CTE offerings. So this will kind of open that up the way it's, kind of the future's going. It would not be, most of the impact would not be during school or it'd be when our students, we have lower student days at the end of the year or like on SAT days when our juniors don't come to us. And my teachers seem excited about the opportunity to offer because it will help us in the future.
Everybody else?
Well, right now, like the two of these grade houses, there's a math teacher in each house, but you're only going to have one social studies teacher for that grade?
Right, so the two social studies teachers would plug into that, whichever exploratory is assigned to that grade. So they would get one semester every day. So eighty-five days of social studies and then they would flip to whatever the other grade level exploratory is. So for eighth grade, it would be eighty-five days roughly, or eighty-five days of social studies. And that would be daily for six events, which would be in terms of what we're currently offering within the humanities model, I think is going to be not just harmful, but I would say an improvement of having social studies teachers teaching daily for a year, but a semester instead of four years.
So is this like a stepping stone plan or would you want to ideally have two social studies teachers per grade?
If we were able to get the positions to have those social studies teachers in each house, I would love for this to be the stepping stone that led to that.
So just as an exploratory though, it meets the requirements for what?
Yeah, it meets the requirements from, just in terms of the state, the amount of time that students would get. And it does follow through.
I don't, I hear that like twenty, that you're connected with the CTE. But it just seems like taking away these programs, I don't know. Is it a backward step to me? I mean, all four are social studies positions to be added.
Well, I also don't want you to think too much of this as just a social studies thing. I mean, the impact that we're going to see on increasing the amount of time students have for science and math and reading and writing and who's teaching. and who's teaching those courses are the main reasons. It's not just trying to get social studies, but you know, if I went back to the first slide, we don't have the explicit teaching of reading and writing in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. You know, the teachers that are teaching writing in seventh and eighth grade are sixty-six percent of them are math and science teachers who are trying to teach writing. I mean, the social studies piece is separated and, you know, in that humanities model allows us to have explicit teaching of social studies, but it also does all of those other things as well.
I just have kind of a concern about the one semester of social studies in the seventh grade level. That just, it feels inadequate to me, or maybe it just hasn't been changed. And I think we should be getting a full year of that curriculum and then do add to what you're doing this form for classes.
It would be, well, you could do it all year long, but it would have to be every other day. It couldn't be every day. Um, and then the only other way to do it would be to add more positions. I'm honest, I'm not even sure we could fit it all into the school day. It's a change.
So if it were to be allowed to be a policy, would it likely, um, in this model, as Brandon just said, actually, you could do a semester with additional social studies classes coming up? It would be somewhat concerning though with the loss of knowledge, which we need to to receive the information. So who receives the information in the morning, means every semester, and then they're not receiving that at all the second semester. Or is it, what if they lost time to talk about the summertime or injury and all the time you're talking about, it's a toll here for injury. The second thing to consider is the issue of the exploratory that we have in, you know, the social studies.
This proposal, it was actually the slide being licensed exploratory, but ideally, yeah, it wanted to be every day.
Could you guys use the microphone?
Uh, I was just saying that, you know, you're right in the sense that, you know, it wouldn't be every day, but that the social studies proposal here would be to slide them into an exploratory. Ideally, we'd love to have it every day. It's just that currently trying to do it in a way that is going to be budgeting, it's just not feasible. We could look at, as I said, alternating the days, so it still goes year round. And if it's the same amount of time, it would just be every other day instead of, you know, eighty-five consecutive days and then nothing. So I mean, it would still allow that to happen over the course of the year. So that might address the concern. It doesn't change the amount of time that we get, but it could just scratch out over the course of the year, so it's consistent.
And where did the emphasis on making, keeping your proposal cost to the whole community come from?
I think just knowing that, you know, every year, you know, with budget time comes, we usually know that it's going to be tight. Knowing that this year is a negotiation for teachers, of course, that administration. That, you know, talking with Kate, the idea was, you know, the best way to make this happen was for it to be budgeted.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to allow, um, as you said before, if anyone from the public wanted to, uh, speak to this, uh, now would be the time, you can come up to the mic, just introduce yourself. So if you have any comments, questions?
Hi, I'm Steve Richard, industrial arts slash tech ed. And actually, I actually, it's pre-engineering program. I've taught you in math for seventeen years, thirty-seven years total, all of the middle school. All I can say is I'm gonna do a huge disservice to the students if you take away this opportunity. We develop well-rounded students with background in hands-on learning. Taking that away, it can't be hit the same way in science. Taking it away is a huge mistake. And I feel really sorry for the students that have to come in for a day. Eleven twelve-year-old kids sitting in a classroom all day long, not getting a chance to do something different. I ask you not to accept the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Silk. I have two kids that are in elementary school, so this doesn't directly affect me, but it kind of does. And I, I think that there are some real problems that they're addressing about, uh, proper teachers teaching English and math and science. But I think the, the idea that a math or, I mean, an English teacher or a science teacher can teach a kid about technology, which is one of the most, um, forward-thinking, not even forward-thinking, but modern ideas that we can equip our kids with to be able to go out into the workplace and find a job. And then I wonder if maybe part of the problem is that the curriculum for technology, it's out of date. And then teaching a kid how to build a document or, um, navigate through the internet is something that is taught one-on-one with Chromebooks. But, uh, thinking about coding, thinking about design, thinking about augmented reality, thinking about experiences on the internet, like that is something that hopefully in two thousand and eighteen isn't just a after-school project because the reality of automation, like today, not, not tomorrow, but today, is sucking up so many jobs. And here's an opportunity for us to really think about where the curriculum needs to be. So maybe the first, uh, solution is to equip our kids with the proper teachers that teach reading and writing. But the second part of that is to really understand where this is going and where the technology needs are and how we can put them with the proper teachers, hands-on, you know, um, not just for an exploratory, but how it's built into the curriculum moving forward.
Thank you.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
To the group, my name's Jackie Johnson, I'm the art teacher here. I did send a letter to all of you and to Mr. Manuel, Dr. Manuel, concerning, outlining my concerns. And I appreciate the responses that I received, I thank you for that. So I'll just be very brief. I have created a page of questions that I have based on, um, Mr. Ward's presentation and I'm confused about a number of things. I think overall, um, you can't replace the computer lab, the teacher who teaches it, tech ed, and a professional who teaches that as well. And you can't, asking other teachers to pick up that slack is the same thing as asking teachers to teach social studies or to teach ELA when they're not certified. I don't understand what the difference is. It's really just a choice. It seems to be a liability if anyone goes into that shop without certification. And I don't think that asking students to make up what they could've done and what they could've learned as skill in after-school programs or after-school is so crowded anyway, sports and other activities. It's not fair to the kids who can't get rides home. You're, you're, now you're singling kids out for this group, can take that opportunity to go to summer school this group. It's just, you either have these programs or you don't have the programs. You cannot make them up any other way. You can't ask us to try and replace them because we can't. You can't ask our technology, people who are with us now, who are awesome, to teach keyboarding. It's one of the greatest skills I've ever learned, is to be able to type sixty-five words a minute without looking and to have a conversation while I'm doing it. And only Don can do that. I've watched him do it, it's part of his curriculum. I see it very often. I can't, it's just imagining those two labs gone. I guess I'm confused because I go to the high school with my eighth graders and they have this incredible day with, in graphic design. Those kids jumped on those computers, they were ready to go, they had the basic skills. You cannot ask our technology people who come inspiradically to give that to them. You know, you can't let these kids have an exploration of what they can possibly choose at the high school by limiting them to a chair and traditional methods of learning. Now's the time to explore. Now we have an amazing program, we don't need to go backwards and align with other middle schools. If we put it together and we keep it and we make it work somehow, this could be a magnet school. This could be a jewel in this community if it isn't already. Don't lose it. I mean, we will not be able to hold on to those labs and when they're gone, they're gone. Again, it goes back to the students and what they're not gonna get. You've got to get them to school first. And those programs reach everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, I'm Diane Dixon, I did Morse to be the nurse here. But really, I wanted to talk to you more from my perspective as a parent. Because I have had, you know, my kids have gone through the process of, um, from the very start, and then step the way, they've gone through, they've finished at Morse, they've gone on to college, they've graduated. And, um, when these proposals were coming up, they had talked about them at home and had mentioned it to my daughters. And I can tell you that, um, my youngest was particularly taken back by this because for her, she identifies tech ed as being the single most important class that put her on the trajectory to be a civil engineer. It was the applied math for architecture or, um, the solar energy. And, um, you know, that, that put her on the path. And I have to tell you, if she did not have that opportunity to dip her toes in the water, she would've been straight on the academic AP courses at Morse. And even having that, it was a struggle to combine both and the academic classes at Morse and to follow through. She did, ended up doing, um, some of the engineering courses that they had at the boat. And, you know, and no one can tell you she's a, a civil engineer and, you know, she, she, you know, felt, she wished she had coding in middle school, that that would've been extremely useful. So, you know, and those are the programs that, you know, made this school unique and special here. And it's sad to see them being shipped away. Social studies is important, absolutely, and only cutback, it went to the humanities model, it's true. And we thought that was a good idea. And we eliminated, well, not at that time too. Our demographics here in this school, you know, our kids need those programs. For some of them, that's their reason for coming to school, people in school. And like for girls, we've produced a lot of female engineers who've gone through and have graduated from Morse High in recent years, many. So hopefully you can find a way to, to keep it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you to Brandon and Kate for presenting everything. Thank you to everyone, uh, from staff and the public who stood up to, to comment. We appreciate it. This obviously is too important, um, it's too important to make a decision tonight. We don't have our whole board here, there's a lot of information to take in. The board has a lot to think about, um, and we still have a lot of questions. And so we're gonna have to, you know, meet further to discuss this all this over and talk some more to the staff administration to figure out, um, where this is headed and what makes the most sense for, for our district. So, um, we will do that and come back to everybody. Um, but we're not gonna take action on that, on this tonight. So thank you all for all of your efforts and all of your passion and all of your care for our students. And, uh, we'll take all of this into consideration and, uh, you know, try to think as creatively as all of you are and see what we come out with. Okay? Thank you. So let's get back to, um, okay, so next, we now have here, um, I think it's eight one seven point three overnight field trip. Request for more students to attend the Maine All-State Music Festival. That is an action item. Do I have a approval? Okay. Second, if I make it, and any questions? All in favor? Great, that's approved. Next, we have, this is a ten point four, first week of board policies which require no action this evening. The, uh, first one is, if it's filed to A D C, it's to not go to possession. Make this through. Anything you need to know, especially, I don't know where it's by. It's an update on this, on this. No, nothing there, other than what's on there is just, yeah, it's like it's just an update. And so folks read through that, we'll take action on it in the meeting. Um, the second one, uh, is follow, uh, file J L C E, administration of medication to students, which again is a, is this a, this one doesn't seem to be, I wasn't sure if this is a, is it a newer version or something? Because of, so this one's brand new. Well, no, I mean, it's a, okay, I don't see a lot of things changed, so I wasn't sure what was changed. Um, so look this one over, administration of medication to students. And now it's done, a lot of definitions. And if you have any questions, let us know and we'll, uh, vote on it next time. This is the, uh, state overnight trip from Morris High School. This is what you mentioned before, Patrick, the, uh, National Ocean Sciences Bowl Finals. Involved in, are, um, no bus needed? Okay. Do I have another question? You have a question?
Only, how, how do we finance this?
I don't have all the answers to that, but I can research it. But I do know that a portion of that is, is paid more through the competition because the winner from the region, I've got to sure exactly the percentage that, that we'll have to, uh, that we may have to pay versus, uh, fundraising at the same time. So I can look into that and get back to it in court detail.
I certainly want to approve it, but at the same time, I want to make sure they have appropriate resources.
Somewhat similar to the Odyssey of the mind where we have teams that qualify for, you know, a trip. It's a combination of fundraising and some support from families and the local budget in some cases.
I have another question. All right, so. Second, okay, um, any other questions? All in favor? Okay. Yeah, just update us if you have any questions. Oh, that's all you can do, yeah. That's great. Yeah, just update us on what that's, oh, that's, that's great. So we're onto public session. Okay, so this is a public session on any other topic. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. If it's been worked out, so if you just come up to the mic, introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Sharon. Just still trying to get my head out and act me back if there's too much of that.
You just speak over into the mic.
Sure. Well, I'm here tonight with a couple of questions and concerns that have been on my mind for about the last two weeks since the current shooting in Florida. I decided that, no. And there are security measures in place there. There's a buzzer system together with the locked doors. Visitors have to sign in and wear a name tag and do a lock and out drill. But I'm not familiar with any other additional security or safety measures in place at the school there. As we've seen from Parklands, from Sandy Hook, from other sort of school shootings, these buzz systems are really not adequate security in stopping and in our government implementing these schools. So one of the questions and concerns I have is what, as a school board, as our RSH one community, as teachers and parents, what is our priority in updating security, having improved security systems in our schools to prioritize? That would be the first, like what is currently, what can we do to improve this security? Also, I know that the Morse High School design is nearing completion and I have actually had some communication with one of our design committee and I, I asked if there had been specific security measures discussed in detail with design. I was told that yes, in terms of a single security entry point that has been a big topical conversation, which I read about in the, what's the, the concept design statement that mentions a secure vestibule. There also talks about a visual with entry points with the roads coming in, making you able to clearly see as people enter the school. But as far as this person knew, there was no specific conversation about detailed security measures within the school, other than those things that have been discussed currently. What I'm referring to are security measures like door stoppers, bulletproof doors, alarm systems, you know, layers of security within the school itself. Nobody wants to talk about this because nobody wants this to happen, but unfortunately for reality, where we are right now. So I want to put that to consideration for the board before moving forward with final design plans, to put this as a priority for consideration for the new Morse High School project. You know, not everything's gonna help clearly. I mean, if you read about this school in Florida, they had a number of security measures in place, including a single entry locked gated system, which the shooter was able to access during buses entering the school. They had a red safety system, which was overridden when the fire alarm was pulled, and other things. So there is no one answer, obviously, but it's something I think we need to make as a priority as a parent, as teachers, as school administrators. We need to find other ways to make safety a priority in our schools. And then lastly, and this is just an individual question early for the school board. Last week, President Trump suggested that army teachers could perhaps stop or prevent future attacks. He suggested that if the culture teacher apartment had been armed, they could've immediately, you know, addressed the shooter and ended the attack. And so now there's a question, a national question of concealed carry of the teachers and administrators in the school systems. This is something that many law enforcement, public safety, even teachers, and teachers here might want to comment on as well, have largely panned this as, you know, not really a, a good idea. But as a school board, I would like to know what your position is on concealed carry of the teachers and administrators in the school.
I'm definitely against it. This proposal came from a draft dodger. That tells you something.
I can speak to the other things. I mean, I'll be general tonight, is that we're constantly revising, sometimes reflecting, sometimes reacting, but also being proactive about the procedures that we have in place in our schools. It has to, I think, there has to be a balance between, which is a very high priority for us, is the safety of our students, but also having a welcoming environment in our schools at the same time. So when it comes to, for example, our existing schools, there are things in place that we, we have to keep confidential. You know, I don't know that we want metal detectors, you know, we want bulletproof glass, you know, in our elementary schools. I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just trying to have that balance. But we are always working with our local law enforcement to talk about not just the building, but the practices that we use. Actually ironically, a month and a half ago, at an administrative team meeting, we talked about some training and we'll probably start with the high school staff, work down. That's just a different way of looking at how we do lockdown procedures. So it's, and it's also education, so that if you see something on social media as a student or as a parent, which actually happened before the break at BMS, which proved to be really nothing, but, you know, trying to get kids and parents to speak up if there's some type of threat that might be out there. In relation to the new school, I would say this, that we've talked to our local law enforcement. We have a meeting set up, it was set up before what transpired recently in Florida, where the belief is that we will have RSH one staff and local law enforcement that will start that discussion about the new Morse High School around security. Because if the first four doors are gonna be shadowproof, or the other things that you mentioned in your email that you sent to me, all of those things have been broached. We've still got time to plan for this. And if we, if we announce everything that this new school is going to have as far as enhanced technology and, I guess, keep it general, then, you know, we, I don't want to jeopardize the safety of our students by providing too much information. So therefore, we do have a building committee and a design committee, but, and we haven't talked a lot about security because we feel right now, the best place to start, that is with our local law enforcement, with a small committee, and then eventually possibly bring it to the building committee and to the board. But the more people that know all of the idiosyncrasies of how we're trying to protect our students, which is again, a top priority for us, it can have a, you know, a drawback to sharing too much information. So we're, we realize that, again, this is a top priority for us and we're working hard on it and I appreciate the public tonight. I would expect that people would come and ask these questions, especially, and I know it's sensitive. So I don't know if I've answered your question completely, but I mean, really, as a public comment, I'd be happy to sit down with you, you know, some other time as well.
And what, just as superintendent, what is your position on concealed carry of the teachers in the school?
My position would be no. And I would have mentioned two other things. There's additional resources coming out from Department of Education. We may use a security expert when we plan for Morse, as well as there is a lawmaker out there right now that's proposing a bill to fund school safety improvements in the state of Maine and rush or it won't go anywhere, but it may. So those two things are also on our horizon up there as well.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Andrea Lederer and I have a doctorate in engineering. So just kind of a comment with, I really didn't come here to talk about the high school security because I know that they won't live here when my daughter goes to Morse. But just a comment, I, I don't know that planned security for Morse is some special military operation that, that information should be withheld from the parents whose children will be behind it. I would beg to defer that it would do a disservice to the security by having that information. I, I just read it and watched a show about one of the safest schools in America and it was very well-known what one is in place. And I, I suppose that if I was the person that was going to commit a crime, it wouldn't be there because I know that it turned out getting away with it. So, but it's just really a general comment.
That's, no, I mean, I appreciate that and we, we will be sharing general information, it just won't be down to a specific level. And again, I'm going by, you know, my conversation with, with Chief Field and our school resource officers as well. So I'm not trying to be secretive about it, but at the same time, not every little piece may be shared with everybody. But yeah, I mean, it is, again, it's a top priority for us. I mean, I know it's simplistic, but just having that one entry within every other door in that, in that building is for exit only. And granted, I know people can prop open doors, but the current facility that we have now is, is not obviously ideal for security. And so there's gonna be a lot of measures that'll be put into place and we're gonna start with a smaller committee, you know, so that's, but that's the point I was trying to make.
I moved here from a location that has actually had two high school shootings in the years since I graduated from high school in CBA and they were pretty far home. And I, we didn't see a lot of changes in school security. So it's just my, my personal feelings that you guys have the opportunity with a random building to go into the future with that security and it is what it is. So the reason why I am up here tonight is because, just like the comment that was made, I, I really want to keep politics away from my daughter and in school as a fourth grader. And it's my understanding that there is a planned student walkout for March fourteenth and a teacher walkout that was scheduled for March first has now been moved to March fourteenth as the first walkout. My concern started really with just Fisher Mitchell and I spoke with Mr. Kirk once a little bit about it today. It's my understanding that there's no plan in place of how legitimately that's going to happen with respecting a student or a teacher's right to protest, but also respecting those parents who do not want their child to participate in that protest. So because the teacher walkout has now been moved to the same day that the student walkout is, I'm concerned for how that's going to happen and how my child is going to be supervised with her and the teachers for seventeen minutes inside the classroom if I've given her instructions that she would not do that. So I'm hoping between now and March fourteenth, there will be some communication sent out to parents on how that's going to happen, what the plan is, or will parents just be allowed? I mean, I know that a lot of these parents, but will parents who choose not to participate in that demonstration to just keep their child?
Yeah, we're receiving guidance on that. We will communicate.
Thank you. Anybody else? And our next meeting is Monday, March twenty-sixth, right here, six p.m. and do I have a motion to, maybe one's to say? Need a second? Need a second? All in favor? Your editor, thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight.